By stating two things. First, ignore whatever Rajeshwari said. I am nothing like what she described me as. The second, which is even more to the point, I know my scientific knowledge of soils is virtually zero. Okay, so I am doubly incompetent in front of all of you who individually know much more about the subject than I do. What I would actually limit myself is, do I think the task that Rajeshwari has set before me in what she just said? And in what promises to be three days of a workshop, which puts current knowledge, practice and policy as the themes around which the discussions will take place, I would like to limit myself here to the very last of these things, which is just the policy part. Because as I have just said, that both on knowledge about soils as well as on practice, I have virtually no competence to say anything. On the policy matters, yes, there is a certain amount of background that I have and I can actually talk a little bit about that. Dr. Natesh set out the broad magnitudes of the problem about as well as anyone could have. And what's the big problem that we are looking at? And clearly, the ingredients of that argument are so stunningly obvious that the need for a workshop like this is something that should have been felt a long, long time back rather than now. what are they? Well, they are that agriculture a part of human activity where there are fixed resources. That is, there are certain resources which are limited by what nature has provided us. And because of that, agriculture is and must be subject, and this is, I'm talking as an economist, so anyone who has any problems with the next statement can immediately say, you know, clarify. Now, because it's subject to limitations of natural resources, that is, there are fixed things which you cannot increase upon, it will be subject to what economists call diminishing returns to scale. In other words, you can put in a lot more, but you can't put in more of everything in the same proportion. And therefore, there will be something which holds back the productivity of everything else that you put forward. I think that is the single most important characteristic of agriculture. And amongst all of agriculture, or all of the inputs, this applies most to land. Land is fixed in the number of square kilometers or whatever it is. But land is even more fixed in terms of that if you keep taking off the top soil, what you get, you get a different kind of soil and you have problems which arise out of that. Again, things I know much less about than you do. The second point which Mr. Natesh made is that we are a country which, like all countries, but probably in a greater degree, have, as humans, contributed to a process of decay which has accelerated massively around the same point where our rate of growth of agriculture started going up as well. This is in addition, of course, to natural events that can take place. Consequently, a very large part of our soil is in some way or the other degraded. And looking forward, the process seems to be getting worse rather than getting better. The main problem is, first, the carbon content of the soil, the organic composition of the soil, the presence or absence of microorganisms in the soil and the balance of soil nutrients, including micronutrients. This much we all know. You don't have to know very much about soil to actually say and make that statement. The two big things which are happening are, the concern is really about the soil carbon content and I'm sure a lot of people will be talking about that. And both the organic content and the organic activity in the soil, which is also being affected by all the other things that we do either for agriculture or for some other reason. Now, amongst the culprits which have caused this, again, Dr. Natesh named them all. It is some traditional practices like heavy tillage and things. But much of it is actually related to the chemical agriculture that we adopted, especially after the Green Revolution. In other words, the massive increase in all sorts of chemical inputs, particularly fertilizers. The impact of that, of course, was mining of those resources nutrients which you are not putting in. The plant would actually take up nutrients as it needs and if it can actually absorb more nutrients because one nutrient has been given in excess, it will actually absorb other nutrients which are not being replenished. And the mining that has happened is both therefore mechanical as well as chemical. That's one part of it. And the other part, as I said, is the effect it has had on the sort of changes which nature carries out because of organic activity in the soil itself. We've been killing off a hell of a lot of microorganisms. Now, why have we done this? And again, that's pretty simple. We did it because at one point that seemed to be the best way of increasing agricultural growth. We did it because we thought that the problems of soil is secondary to the problem of solving the immediate problem of food production. In other words, right at the beginning, there was a clear recognition, even at that time, there was a clear recognition that in going for what could give us immediate increases in output, we might be making some sacrifice on sustainability into the future. I think it would be wrong to say that those who went in for the Green Revolution were not aware of it. They simply took a call where one priority was put a lot more than another priority. And I think many of the people involved at that time have, including, for example, Swaminathan, have, I think, over time actually moved towards a somewhat different way of thinking about things. So I don't think it makes too much sense to play a blame game here. What is necessary is to say that the fact that there was a trade-off was recognized and nonetheless, a particular direction at that point was taken. And I think the consequences of that are what we have to actually look at as going into the future because that trade-off exists. It's probably in some ways becoming stronger. And what we don't have in place is that we all know that there is a trade-off. Some might actually deny the trade-off on both sides. Some might say, no, no, the soil problem is not that great. The others might say the soil problem or other problems of sustainability are so great that let's stop the growth part of it. But I think most people would say that the trade-off exists and we've got to actually think in terms going forward, how to go about it. So I mean, my starting point certainly, and I'm laying down my cards on the table, is that we've got to try and move on both those fronts, recognizing that if you have too much of one, you might have too little of the other. I mean, I'm not going to actually take the viewpoint on either one or the other side. I think that sets the issue of policy. Because policy is really about stating and then choosing priorities. just to take a quick look at agricultural policy in this country. If you take at independence, I mean, our record on agriculture was abysmal. Agriculture hardly had grown for about 100 years before independence. The rate of growth, as some estimates put it at negative, some put it at about 1% per annum at most. Most put it at around zero. Nonetheless, what we inherited in terms of agricultural policy did have three big components and virtually nothing else. The first was irrigation. Irrigation and canal irrigation was supposed to be this big driver of agricultural growth. The second was this notion of moving from inferior crops to more productive or more paying crops. I mean, you've got a lot of change in the cropping pattern mainly towards what came to be called cash crops, particularly during the pre-independence day. The entire sugarcane belts, tea plantation crops, a lot. And the source of growth there was the some things pay less, some things pay more, and you shift your cropping pattern. And the third, and this is important, there was a recognition to some extent that government had a role to play. And there were government agricultural departments even before independence. And significantly, government agricultural departments at independence had a very strong component of soil conservation. And much less so of anything else that we know today. There was less on pushing new varieties rather than new crops. And even, of course, less on pushing chemical compounds, although there was a certain amount on tillage practices. Now, after independence, this more or less continued for about, till about the Green Revolution, except that what you tried to add to this was a sense of India, I mean, somebody said that, you know, there is no single model which will work in India. So you did have some idea of things have to be different in different places. And you did get, as a result of the independence movement, a recognition that local knowledge does matter. And that you did get, therefore, a certain amount of involvement between people who had a reputation of knowledge at the local level and governments, again, at the local district or the state levels. Now, for various reasons, Indian agricultural growth from roughly growing at 0% for about 100 years grew at about 3%, 3.5% for the next 15 years, 10 years. It ran into a crisis then. You got the Green Revolution. Green Revolution gave you a little bit of a buzz. But then a lot of people would say that we are at a crisis level again. Now, the Green Revolution did change the entire way in which agriculture policy and institutions evolved. It's around the same time as the Green Revolution, you've got a number of things happening. You've got all the agricultural universities. I mean, apart from a few that existed from the British times, almost all the new agricultural departments, universities grew up post-sixties, just as the IITs did. You've got the knowledge system in agriculture became a knowledge system which went through these universities. And in some respects, it actually started ignoring the voice from the field to some extent. Not entirely, but to some extent. Second, you got massive increase in the importance given to seeds and to fertilizers. These two things defined the Green Revolution. And of course, it came on top of what the other thing that the Green Revolution required, which was water. And therefore, irrigation was always a continuing theme. That continued. Focus started shifting to groundwater rather than surface water. But by and large, the new addition to this was genetics and nutrition. Rather than think about soil as the source of where it all meets. So we had institutions newly created. We had a whole thrust of where the new productivity is going to come through, which is seed and fertilizers. And on top of that, we had a recognition that economics also matters. And among the things again created in 1967 was the Food Corporation of India, the idea being that, you know, prices, some support prices are necessary and the price support system can be fitted in with supporting farmers on the one hand and having sources of food for the public distribution system. Now, all of these ingredients is something which much of our central government's agricultural policy still depend upon. The price support system, the agricultural universities and agricultural department, which is really thinking of new crops, sorry, new varieties and new inputs, along with, of course, the old idea about water matters. Now, has this system come to a totally grinding halt? Is it? And again, I think there will be some people who would say agriculture is in such a crisis that things have come to a grinding halt, so it's a revolutionary situation now that, you know, you've got to make a revolutionary break. I mean, unfortunately, I don't think that's the case. I say unfortunately, pretty meaningfully, because I think there is too much in the system which will guide a lot of people within the system to think that there is nothing terribly wrong with it. So the change will not come by saying that there is something terribly wrong with what we are doing. It'll rather come if we can show that there is something terribly right which could have happened, which is not. And therefore, one has to have a positive message rather than a negative message from workshops such as this one. Now, why am I saying that people will not think that there is something terribly wrong? They won't because if you look at the last 12 years, 13 years, that basically, if you look at from the time I first went into the planning commission to now, the rate of agricultural growth has, if anything, been higher than it was in the remaining parts of the post-independence period and therefore, much, much higher than ever before. Of course, we've had droughts. Of course, the last two years were drought years. But by and large, you've had a rate of growth of agriculture which is 3% plus. For almost 10 years, it was nearly 4% per annum. And this in a context where the population growth, which was about 2.5% per annum in the 70s, is now slowing, is now about 1.5 and will slow down very considerably in the next 10 or 20 years. So you, in relation to the requirements from agriculture that the population grows throbs up, you are actually supplying a lot more. And there is a case to say that maybe what we need to think of is not the growth in itself, but its composition. We can play with it because the needs imposed by population growth are coming down for demographic reasons alone. That rate of growth itself is coming down very, very sharply. So again, that makes for a reason that, you know, we're doing quite well on the growth side, is why people might say that tell us what message you want to give. And what is the message that a workshop like this, the first message that a workshop like this can actually take to policymakers or people who are thinking about priorities? Now, the first one, I think, the very first thing is that, and again, I think Rajeshwari, I think Richa, I think Dr. Natesh, all of them said in many different ways, without using the word I'm just going to use, the same thing, which is that in a fundamental sense, soils are a public good. They're a public good because, yes, people, it's not public, by public good, economists have a particular meaning. Okay? And I'm not going to define that to you. But a public good is something which nobody individually has too much incentive or have too little incentive to actually look after. And the only agency which can act essentially, therefore, provide enough public goods is the state or some collective such as the state. That is, you have to rise above the individual to provide public goods. Examples of public goods are street lamps and things of this kind. There is no one else who's going to provide that. Why is soils so much of a public good? Essentially, or to put it another way, why is it that there is a clear economic reason to believe that individuals themselves are going to look after their own soil and will be able to do so? That is, individual efforts are simply not enough. Why is there any reason to say that? But there are many. But the most important one is the one common to a lot of natural resources. That is, what my soil looks like doesn't depend on me alone. It depends upon what everybody in that region is doing. Now, when you do something like this, you're really talking about collective effort. And collective effort is something which comes only if the people say, okay, we all agree. Individually, we might have gained over the status quo by doing X. But if X is done by everybody, then over a period of time, I'm worse off having done the X. That is, if I ignore time and I ignore others, if only I did X, I would be very much well off. But if everybody does it and if they do it consistently, then over time, we might all become worse. This message has obviously to have a knowledge which is not to any single individual, but to people collectively. And a collective message is a message which can only be spread not in the form of economic incentives, although economic incentives are not irrelevant, but in terms of a framework in which to think about things. So my second point about to this workshop is think of a framework in which this can be done both in terms of the knowledge that you would like to go percolate and in terms of the agencies which would help in that percolation. It will not happen individual by individual. Now, part of that problem is obviously what goes into knowledge systems that our ICR institutes and our agricultural universities themselves have. That is an area on which people will have to work. That is an area on which I think there are papers which have actually added in this workshop elements. It is not a particularly an area on which I have any competence. But nonetheless, the syllabus, the content of teaching of agricultural universities is clearly something which goes into what feeds in to knowledge systems. But knowledge systems and its knowledge, practice and policy that Rajeshwari talked about is also about policies and institutions. is also about policies and institutions. So you have to have knowledge somewhere, people have to. Unfortunately, of course, we are also becoming a post-truth society. So I mean, people can all say that this is my knowledge. Which can well happen. But nonetheless, there has to be some agreement on that this is the right way of scientific thinking. And that, as I said, is something really, which is to our scientific establishments there. And I'm assuming that we can do something there. And even if nothing great is done, it admits knowledge from other sources as valid knowledge in some case. But even if that were the case, you need institutions which are able to reach in terms of policy. Now, there are policies and policies. And one of the things that we had tried in the period that we were in the planning commission was to address the soil issue in terms of two elements which the central government could directly influence. On one of them, we failed and failed miserably. We had recognized that the pricing system of our fertilizer regime was so absurd that it was actually creating massive imbalances. And that these imbalances were a major reason responsible for soil digger. We had hoped to move towards what was called the a pricing system based on an optimal nutri, uh, nutrition balance. We've actually ended up worsening the nutrition balance. And that is simply because urea prices have a lot more political clout. So you now have much cheaper urea relative to all other chemical fertilizers. And that has worsened our problem rather than improved them. We had also hoped that the nutrient policy would actually put in much more importance into micronutrients. To some extent, it has happened, but by and large, it hasn't. So on the nutrient side, we tried and I'm pretty clear that we hadn't succeeded. On another side, we thought that we needed to push farmers into giving importance to the composition and quality of their soils. For a long time, our soil analysis used to be on a regional basis. That is on T S I, on block soil thing. So there was a national soil research institute, which got you surveys of what soils looked like. And you tried to go get the agricultural departments to design any programs, if it may be, to the soil composition, but of a particular location at the level lowest of a block, sometimes even as large as a district, rather than at the level of the farmer. So the other thing that you tried was this whole idea of the soil health card. The idea being that not so much that it was important to know what the health of a particular farmer's soil was, but that the farmer, if he actually found out that the health of the soil was bad, he was aware of a problem and would be able to do something about it. Unfortunately, what has happened is that the program itself hasn't worked too badly. The number of soil health cards issued is very, very large, larger than I thought would actually happen. But it has actually become somehow the idea that this in itself is a solution. That is, something which I had said was a public goods problem could be converted into a private individual problem like a health problem, which is that you get a bad soil test. It's like a bad blood test and you immediately go to the doctor and the doctor will cure you. I mean, that has become, in a sense, the perspective which is trying to reduce a problem which needs public participation to a problem which all that it needs is that if there is the right doctor, the doctor will care, cure you. And let's face it, health is one of the biggest public good problems. We've done this to our health system, we are now doing it to our soil health systems. Okay? So I think the second idea, it's no, it wasn't a bad idea. I think it's still something which we can build upon. And I think this area of soil health cards is something this workshop should really start thinking about how something on which a fair amount has been invested, how this could be made something which actually delivers rather than being seen as something which has already delivered. The third area, I think, and the central government that we tried to work on is one Rajeshwari mentioned. Which is, we have a lot of central schemes. But agriculture finally is a state subject. Agriculture, however much the central government puts in effort on money, nothing works on the ground unless the state governments put in even more money, but more importantly, put in even more effort into what it has to do. And as Rajeshwari said, we tried to do an architecture of policy on the R K V Y model, where R K V Y was only a seed. The states could bring any of their schemes and get R K V Y funding to build on it. Because we thought that the states would know better than the center what to concentrate on. And what it did would be, on the whole, better rewarding than if the center chose to do this or that. However, even the R K V Y, I mean, like all government schemes, they don't do as well as you think they ought to. But one area in which R K V Y did much worse than we had hoped for was that we had expected this decision-making level to go down from the state to at least the district level. This did not happen. That is, both in the agricultural extension system, which had broken down completely at the state level, the central government had a whole scheme, which is still a very large scheme, of rejuvenating the extension services. And this was to be done through an agency based really at a district level and federated up to the state level. And we had this idea that ideas on agriculture should come from this organization linked to the R K V Y. This, again, some states acted a little bit, most states simply ignored. That framework would have allowed, again, local knowledge, local practitioners to be on the boards of these district things and maybe upwards federated up to the state level. Now, the reason that is important is the one way you can get the soil card makes people realize that there is a problem with their soils. But the idea and the reassurance that this is part of a government policy can only come if there is discussion of all other policies which do not ignore the soil. This again didn't come. So again, my last, in some sense, request to this workshop is think of the architecture of policymaking. There will be the center. When it comes to knowledge, it is the central government which will lead. State governments will finance universities, but the I C A R will be financed by the center. Much of the research will be there. The big thinking will come from the center. So center is important. The center is also important in terms of subsidies, all the nutrition policies. The state is important because the composition of actual policies is at the state level. That is where finally, what matters in terms of agriculture rather than incentives become outlined in terms of priorities. But where practice is important is really at a much more lower level. At the level at most of districts, but below districts. And it is there that one has to say that let us have institutions which look at agriculture as a whole and specific schemes of the government are at least there for the purposes of the extension network, for the purposes of advice that farmers get, come to that nodal, I think, at that level. And what each of those might choose will be very, very different all over the six thousand districts. They need not be very similar across them. But I think that diversity is important, whereas at the same time, a common perception of the scientific truth is necessary at the central level. And finally, let me say something which is really not about soil health. It is about, we have been talking simply about agriculture. But in the architecture of things, which is what I moved to at the end of what I had to say, in the architecture of things, both in our central government, as in our state government, and increasingly at the local bodies level, it is the Department of Rural Development which is much, much more important than the Departments of Agriculture. This is in terms of money, this is in terms of personnel, personnel, and this is in terms of the kind of big-ticket items which are there. This is important. This is important and this is not a bad thing. Some people again have told me, no, no, rural development should be scaled down, agriculture should be put out. Let's face it, this is a country which is already undergoing people leaving agriculture. So the total agricultural workforce is actually nearly thirty million less today than it was in two thousand and one. And it's going to actually happen that way. That's the historical reality of all development anywhere in the world. And the problem is that when you start leaving agriculture, you need other things to do. And therefore, the idea that rural is agriculture is increasingly untrue. Today, agriculture gives you less than half of even the rural economy in terms of the total incomes produced. Less than half of all rural incomes is coming from agriculture. It's not very much less than half, but it is still less than half. So rural is, agriculture is rural, but rural is no more agriculture. So what the rural development department does is actually trying to, or or should do, is trying to prepare the country for a country where the share of agriculture will fall. But it has acquired an importance far greater than the Department of Agriculture, which is what most of you deal with. Rural development is where N R E G A is. Rural development is where most of the big money things are, as well as it's where, for example, the, you know, all the self-help group movements, all of those are under rural development. So the way in which one links what is essentially the trajectory of the rural economy to government policy is, cannot be done only through agriculture. It has to involve rural development. For the rural development people, soil is a distant issue. Agriculture people, at least you can convince them. So somehow you've got to try to do more in terms of convincing the rural development people to think of soil as something that is important to them as well. How can you do that? I'll just give one example and there can be many, many. One of the arguments against a lot of issues or suggestions made on soil conservation is that this is a very labor-intensive activity. That is, looking after soils is a labor-intensive activity or, you know. But if that is so, then the mechanisms, the schemes are all with rural development. In, for example, in Narega, where the money should go to water and land, the idea that soil conservation can be a very large ingredient is something which is part of the act. It is part of the original intention. But somehow, it is not something which has permeated the thinkings of the Panjatiraj system. And again, if you've got to have this link between knowledge, practice and policy. And if it's you who are going to contribute to that link developing, this is the other area that you must highlight. Thanks a lot.